Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, February 5th, 2013. And before we go any further, I will just give everyone a gentle warning that this is our first official paperless meeting. We're all on our tablets, so if we have any unforeseen glitches, we're going to blame the tablets for that. But we're exciting, and I do want to, I will say this again later, but I do want to thank especially our town clerk, Michelle Dami, and Julia Baldia for like two years, a year and a half worth of research, setting us all up, getting us all the tablets, and instructing us to get started. So, thank you to you and to Julie also, and we'll see how good we are at being pupils here.
You do great.
So with that, I'll formally call the meeting to order and ask for roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Next, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and if I may invite one of our special guests tonight, Alman Bundy, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any closed session report tonight?
No, we don't.
Thank you. Way to throw your voice.
In stereo, yeah.
Town Attorney. Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, or are there any changes to that agenda? No changes? Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion. We adopt the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving right along to public comment. So tonight, now is the time to invite any members of the public to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, and I know that we do have some special guests here that will be represented at least initially by Supervisor Brad Wagenknecht. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, we're fifteen months into the pad, using the pad, and it still sometimes challenges us, so I think everybody will be understanding. It saves us 500 pages of paper every week, so it's well worth it. Let me pass this out. This is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors, and I'm going to invite you to think about doing that later on, not tonight, obviously, because this is public comment. We all have a great debt to pay. That debt is to our veterans. Our veterans interrupt their lives for us. This life interruption often creates complications. When a veteran returns, there are often issues. Family situations have changed, can change. Housing can become an issue. What about job and career? Health and mental health issues? Finding help? Emergencies? We in local government have heart, but we don't necessarily have funding. To deal with these and other issues, the Veterans Advocacy Coalition was founded. It meets monthly, last Wednesday of the month, at noon, at the Red Cross, and here are the groups that are represented in that group, in that advocacy coalition right now. The Napa Red Cross, the Napa County Health and Human Services, the Napa County Veteran's Service Officer, the City of Napa Housing Authority, Yountville Veterans Home, Pathway Home, Napa Valley College, American Legion, Vietnam Veterans of America, IOF and OEF Veterans, and North Bay Veterans Resource Center. I was fortunate to be part of this group, some of whom are here tonight, and you'll see, they're not just pretty faces, but they're here to back this idea, to back this idea of the coalition, and some may speak briefly, I don't know. Without the caring efforts of the members of the coalition, many veterans would fall through the cracks and not be able to find help. And this group is helping to raise awareness of the public of everything our veterans have done for us. Last fall, banners were hung in the city of Napa to recognize Napa residents currently serving on county overseas in harm's way. Last November, the Board of Supervisors passed the resolution that you have to recognize the coalition, and I would offer that opportunity to you. I'm available for follow-up, and my friends with me would happily answer any questions you have. And my number, I can be found down at the Board of Supervisors, and I'd be happy to help you in any way I can to do this.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you.
We know how to find you, that's for sure. You can't hide. Thank you very much. It's very much appreciated, on behalf of the entire council, that you bring this forward tonight. If any of you other folks would like to speak on this issue tonight, you're welcome to. Obviously, as you know, we can't have a formal discussion, but we can certainly take the center advisement to bring it up at a later meeting. Yes, please. Mr. Bundy?
Yeah, Alman Bundy, I'm a resident of Yountville, and I just encourage you to go to napa-vet.info/ and that's a website that is available to, that lists a lot of the resources for veterans. It's something that was put together by our coalition and actually by Frank Lucier, if you haven't met Frank, he's sitting right there. He, when he was the Director of the Red Cross here in town, was very open to helping us get this started, to help veterans. And we have helped a number of veterans, some who have fallen through the cracks of the services, in terms of rent support, transportation, enrollment in VA, all types of things. The coalition is serving a very valuable asset to the county, and I would just urge the council to give serious consideration to recognizing the Napa County Veterans Advocacy Coalition.
Great. Thank you very much. And while it has been more in the forefront recently, I know that, Mr. Bundy especially, you and I talked about this years ago.
Yes.
And it's been in the works for that long, and the need's been there. Thankfully, it has been elevated on the public awareness level, but it needs to be higher. So, thank you all for what you've been doing. Yes, please.
I'll be very brief. Frank Lucier, I used to be with the Red Cross, now I'm the, somehow got to be Chair of this coalition. When I was with the Red Cross, I had a grant, and at the end of the grant, I had some money left over. It was for military things. We bought a lot of things for the Veterans Home. And I looked at, one of the things we could spend it on was a partner's lunch, and I had no idea what a partner's lunch was. So I invited that list that Supervisor read to a private lunch, shut the door, and I said, "Thank you very much for what you do. What are we missing?" And for the next two hours, they talked about the things that are falling through the cracks and how we could fix those. That's how this group started. It's a, if it does nothing else, it allows groups to network together that normally don't come in contact with each other, and that in itself is a real benefit to veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Might as well. You can't be the one that didn't.
Yeah. Michael Bunch, I'm a resident of Yountville, as well as a member of the Yountville Veterans Home, and a member of the coalition as well. The big difference with the Veterans Coalition as compared to other veteran service organizations that I found with working through them and helping to get this set up, is we're not focused on one individual group. It's veterans of all periods, all generations, everything. And it's not to where we're seeking funds for ourselves, but for the other veteran service organizations, for the other agencies that actually serve the veterans. We're more of an advocacy group, and that's why that's in the name title, because we have learned, and I know I've learned as well, myself being a vet, that there's a lot of services that we just don't know is there. And not every agency has the complete picture. Each one may only have one little piece of it, but having them all to come together and work closely, then they're learning that there are benefits that they didn't know about, that they can start to share and educate their veteran clients on, so they really understand what's fully out there. And that's the main thing of what we're really looking at. So hopefully, you guys will consider it and put that together to do the same thing as the county's done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That appears to be the end of our public comment portion, so we'll move right on to our consent calendar. Agenda item number seven, are there any changes to consent or questions? Thank you very much, all of you, for being here and what you've been doing. Appreciate it.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Councilmember Mueller, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. I did want to just recognize Kara Scoggins for her continued service with the Napa County Local Food Advisory Council. Thank you very much, Mrs. Scoggins, for continuing to serve your community, and job well done. Moving on to presentations, I will lead off with our State of the Town, my State of the Town address for 2013, as long as I can find it. There we go. As I was preparing my State of the Town address, two events made me stop and rethink the focus of my remarks. I'll review our accomplishments from 2012 and goals for 2013 in a few minutes, but I want to start with those two events. One was President Obama's inaugural speech, which highlighted the constitutional phrase, "We, the people." He talked about how we need to work together so all may be successful, that we should think of how we can help others, not just ourselves. He also talked about the responsibility we have to carry on the hard work of those who came before us. It made me think about us, the people of Yountville. Often, people ask, "What makes our town such a special place?" One of the first answers is the people. It's our welcoming smiles on the street, our volunteer spirit, our generosity, our simplicity, and our sophistication. It's a happiness we gladly share with family, friends, and neighbors, and it's a concern we have for others. Shortly after the tragedy in Newtown, Connecticut, I was asked by a resident, "What's the town going to do to remember these young angels?" Within hours, town staff and residents were hanging white ribbons with the names of the children and teachers lost that day on the town Christmas tree in front of Community Hall. We identified with Sandy Hook, especially through the prism of our Yountville Elementary School. We, the people of Yountville, came together on September 11th, 2012, with those who keep us safe every day, our Cal Fire and Napa County Sheriff's Personnel, and stood in front of our World Trade Center Steel Memorial, remembering how all of our lives changed 11 years earlier. We, the people of Yountville, supported generations of heroes who live at our Veterans Home, as we stood with Congressman Mike Thompson when he announced the U.S. Post Office at the home would remain open. Shortly thereafter, the post office was renamed posthumously in honor of Congressional Medal of Honor recipient and home resident, Private First Class Alejandro Ruiz. In November, dozens of volunteers and a list of celebrated local chefs came together for the 8th Annual Veterans Day Luncheon to again say thank you to our veteran neighbors. When the community Thanksgiving meal was in jeopardy, Yountville Kiwanis brought together a group of residents and businesses to continue the tradition. We, the community of Yountville, welcomed the return of 6th Grade to Yountville Elementary School and continued to generously support the school so it can remain a vital component of our town today and long into the future. And that brings me to the second event that I want to share, which occurred two weeks ago. The Yountville Elementary School's Student Leadership Group recognized several students during school assembly with character awards for integrity. They also graciously presented the mayor of Yountville with an award, which really was recognition of the dedication and teamwork of our entire town council and staff. One by one, each leadership student defined the word integrity. They used terms like "the foundation of character," "honesty," "being trustworthy," "dependable," "reliable," "fair," "unbiased," and "hardworking." "Integrity," they said, "is, quote, 'the number-one quality of leadership.'" Those are characteristics I think about frequently and that we all need to remember and strive for as we move forward this year. Now, some of the highlights of 2012. Yountville's economy continues to perform at a high level, posting record revenues thanks to a robust business community based on world-class food, wine, and the arts. For the first time ever, we topped $5 million for the year in transient occupancy tax. Our business community generated record sales tax exceeding $900,000. This success has allowed us yet again to adopt a balanced budget without having to take from our reserve funds or reduce the high level of service we provide to our residents. Part of the town's fiscal health is based on this town council taking the difficult but critical step to restructure fees for our water and sewer operations, which were significantly underfunded, to ensure the long-term viability of those core services. Working with our wonderful town employees, the town council implemented pension reform, something many cities continue to struggle to achieve, but that will help ensure our future employee benefit obligations will be met. Looking ahead, our goal will be to maintain this level of economic vitality so we can continue to deliver diverse, quality recreational programs, public safety, and other essential services that allow our residents to enjoy a high quality of living. Cultural tourism and the arts have taken on an increasingly high profile, and that's no accident. We need to continue to evolve as a community, both in the services we provide our residents and in the experiences we offer our visitors. One case in point is the opening of the Napa Valley Performing Arts Center at Lincoln Theater. The theater was dark in 2012, but it was not quiet. I was part of a group that included Executive Director and Yountville resident, Michael Madden, state legislators, California Department of Veterans Affairs and Veterans Home administrators, other local elected officials, and dedicated residents, all of whom recognize the value of the Lincoln Theater. And right here in town, thanks to the ongoing commitment of a small but very dedicated group of residents and business owners working with town staff, Yountville Arts now is an official town commission, and it continues to shape our public art experience. Exhibitions and receptions in the gallery at the community center, a second mystery writers' forum, and a growing literary program top the list of free art activities available to our community. Other events in 2012 included the 35th Annual Yountville Days Parade and Festival, co-hosting with the Yountville Kiwanis Club for Family Swim Night at the Yountville Community Pool, the 3rd Annual Winter Wonderland Craft Show, 2nd Annual Wellness Fair and Kids' Day, a Halloween Fun Run, co-sponsored with the Tug McGraw Foundation, a partnership with the Napa Valley Film Festival for its second successful year, and expanded recreation services at the Yountville Community Center, where we saw over 9,000 people use the facility last year. The sound of falling pins echoed once again at the Veterans Home bowling alley as it came back online, and the Heroes Tavern reopened for business. Expanded library hours resulted from a partnership with the Friends of the Library, town council and staff, and the Napa County Library System, using local volunteers to staff additional hours. The town also negotiated the extension of Yountville Trolley Service to seven days a week with expanded hours of operation, and ridership in December of 2012 was up an amazing 73 percent from the prior December. Our public work staff was busy last year, delivering neighborhood projects like street resurfacing, sidewalk replacements, new walking paths, tennis court resurfacing, and a methane recapture project at the town's wastewater treatment plant that will deliver both environmental and financial benefits. The evolution of North Yountville, as it has become known, No-Yo, continued in 2012 with the openings of Chicho Restaurant, Redwood, and North Block Hotel. Napa Valley Lodge completed beautification and street improvements. Washington Square progressed with a site renovation, and welcomed new tenants Vineyard Dog, Napa Valley Toy Company, and this spring, R&amp;D Kitchen. Other notable developments included Heston Vineyards obtaining approval to build a new tasting room and kitchenware retail shop, the rebranding of Hotel Yountville, and the renovation of Bouchon Bakery following a fire that closed it for several months. So what can we look forward to in 2013? After years of postponement, we have funding to seismically retrofit this town hall. Additional ADA sidewalk and path resurfacing projects are scheduled. Pedestrian-scale wayfinding signage will be placed along Washington Street to better link the south and north ends of town. Construction of new single-family homes and two duplexes continues at Girardi Place on Fennel Road. Madison and Yount Streets will be resurfaced after sewer lines are replaced. Utilities will be undergrounded at Vandeleer Park and along a section of Washington Street as part of the Heston Vineyards retail building project. While these and other improvement projects and community events enhance our quality of life, they do not tell the whole story about what we have achieved or what we will accomplish moving forward. They alone do not define us. We, the people of Yountville, do that. Thank you, and we look forward to a great 2013. We need a larger public audience. With that, I will move on to our next presentation, which is a presentation of the Napa County Mosquito Abatement District's annual report, and we get to see some familiar faces. Welcome.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know, I'm Stephen Rosa, former council member, former employee, former a lot of stuff. I'm also the, I'm the towns representative of the Napa County Mosquito Abatement District, and currently the board president. With me tonight is Wes Maffey, our manager. For those of you that don't know, the Napa County Mosquito Abatement District's been in business since 1925. Consists of six representatives, five from the municipalities and the county, and one from the county at large. We are a county-wide special district. We have eight employees, and we do a pretty good job so far. I don't know, I think we've only had, what, 28 service calls?
Not too many.
Yeah. From Yountville, so we must be doing a pretty good job here, anyway. I think we get more yellow jacket calls here than we do mosquito calls. Anyway, we've had a busy year last year, as everybody does with, you know, we have employee issues as all government agencies do. We've had several large projects, some of them are still in progress right now. We've completed the solarization of the offices and shops in American Canyon, and we're looking now, we had a consultant do a lighting retrofit study for us, so we're reducing our dependence on electricity quite a bit. So, anyway, we have NPDES permit issues, we're doing a programmatic environmental impact report, we have a new software program coming online, we've upgraded the, I should probably be letting, Wes telling you always. We have an updated website, which is pretty nice. Let's see, what else have we done?
Can you remind us of the website address?
NapaMosquito.org. Yeah. And it has a lot of nice, a lot of information on it. It's really very concise, it was a major, major redo and upgrade. Also, we have new artwork for our newspaper ads that go out during peak mosquito season, and we'll rebroadcast our radio spots for letting people know how to control the mosquitoes in their yards, so that's some of our public outreach that we do. Anyway, having said that, I'll bring Wes up here, and he can get into more of the particulars and give us more information.
Thanks very much. Yeah, my name's Wes Maffey. I've been the manager of the district now for the last 15 years, and it's been a journey and a process of evolution to bring the district to a place where we're better known in the community, folks know that they can utilize us as a resource in terms of not only just taking care of mosquitoes and yellow jackets, but also as a resource for information, if there's questions about insects, or questions about rodents, or other sorts of vector-borne This last year, we have not seen a lot of West Nile virus activity, which is good for us, although there's been a tremendous amount of activity throughout the state. We still have significant mosquito populations that we're dealing with. The container breeding mosquitoes, the mosquitoes that breed in storm drains, and abandoned swimming pools are all excellent vectors of West Nile virus, and so this has become a primary focus for the district. When we were founded, our initial focus was more towards mosquitoes that breed in marshes and in large swampy areas, and there was some concern with malaria, as it was present, the last cases having been diagnosed, 1939, near Pewter Creek. So, as you can see, there's been sort of this shift over time, and with that, we're really trying to get the word out again to remind folks, this is the time to start doing it. Check your yard for containers that are holding water, make sure that the leaking pipes are fixed. If you need assistance or you need advice, please contact us. There's no charge for our services, we're funded by Ad Valorem property tax, and there's a benefit assessment, and so we're more interested in getting out and trying to get ahead of this. If we manage the water, and this is probably the biggest takeaway message, if you manage the water, we don't got to use pesticides. Bad English, but it makes the point. We really, really want to try and minimize the use of chemicals and pesticides. We do have things that we can use that are biological control agents. You can put mosquito fish in the ornamental ponds, we usually have fish available starting in April. We have bacterial control agents specific to mosquitoes, and these types of things are very useful, and yet it is still managing the water that is everything. And of course, any information that folks can provide to us, you know, we get a lot of information about abandoned pools, or they saw, you know, water collecting in a ditch or a vacant lot. We're happy to receive that, we're happy to go check it out. Most of the time, we're aware of it, and yet there's always something new, so we're happy to get that information, we're happy to interface in any way that we can. And with that, I guess I would just open it up for questions.
Any questions from the council? Councilor Doran Becker?
I do have one, and that's from personal experience. Just before Christmas, my cat ingested Decon and almost died. I lost one four years ago to Decon. I was wondering, do you know of, you know, and isn't that dangerous if that gets into the water and into the soil as well?
There's some concern, well, when you use rodenticides, especially baits, there's a couple of different issues. One is, you don't know where the rodent is going to die, because it ingests the bait and it takes some time, so we have some concerns with that. We realize that there are times when it's necessary, especially if you have a really tremendous rodent population. If you see a lot of daytime activity, you've got a big population going. Yet, there still needs to be a lot of care, because you can have secondary poisoning. Not only can a pet ingest the rodenticide, they can ingest the poisoned rodent and still have that effect. So there's some concern, and there needs to be some balance. Snap traps have their use, but again, you have to be careful where you place these things. The best method for control for rodents is, again, reducing the harbage, which means when you have ivy growing up a building that's really dense or dense vegetation and a collection of refuges, there's a tendency for rodents to begin to nest there. In terms of your question about, are these materials dangerous if they get into the water or the soil? They can be, especially if there's a large use and a large volume of this material that's used, and so we really encourage folks to be very careful and very cautious. If you're going to engage in your own version of rodent control, we're happy to provide information about the various natural methods that can be done.
Oh, good.
Including exclusion, how to look for rodent sign, the things that you can do to keep them out of your home. And usually, when you reduce places that they can live, what we call harbage, you tend to begin to reduce the population in and around the home, and so it helps reduce the need for use of poisons.
Thank you.
Thinking about how people tend to communicate these days with social media and Twitter, I'm thinking specifically, do you have a way that if somebody sees a condition out on the street, they can respond to you rather than waiting until they can access your website do you have a way that if somebody sees a condition out on the street, they can respond to you rather than waiting until they can access your website? Is there any way to?
Right now, it's primarily by phone, and we really encourage that personal contact. There are literally eight of us covering the entire county, and there's two in the office, which means between all of the state reports and the county reports and the different federal regulations, we're like this deep in paperwork, and so it's all we can do to keep pushing that out, which means as a rule, we're not always looking at email or the website. And that, hopefully soon, that'll change, but right now, that isn't the case. So we encourage folks, pick up the phone, give us a call. You will get a live person. I'm not into this message machine stuff. I just don't like it. It's very rare that that happens. And if you don't get a live person, you will get a call back that same day. We're usually very careful about that, unless, of course, if you call in the evening, and then we'll call you the next morning. So that response and turnaround is very quick, and that's one of the things that we actually pride ourselves on.
Could you remind our audience again the phone number and then the website again?
The phone number for the district is 553-9610. The website is mosquito.org, and the website was set up primarily as an informational tool or resource. So when you go to that website, there's not only information about what we do and how we do our work, there's also a complete section on the different pesticides used in mosquito control. Some of those we don't use. We're more focused on the natural and the biological control or materials that are specific to mosquitoes. But we still have it in there. It has links that takes you to the MSDS sheet directly, to the label directly, to the manufacturer's website. We also have a whole section that lists ExToxnet. It's got a number of different organizations, both for and against the use of pesticides. So we have it all there so that folks can do their own research, and this is sort of a portal to assist with that. And then, of course, all of our reports and grand jury investigations and whatever's been done to the district, that's all on there as well.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
If I may, I was going to suggest that our staff would like to work with you, Wes, and maybe we can develop a, what I'll call a portal page where we talk about the general issues. And if somebody has an issue, we can encourage them to reach you, add a link on our website to yours, and also the phone contact. So we'll work with you if that's something that you'd be interested. That way, when people on our site, excuse me, they, you know, when they're looking for that, we can get them to you, which is going to be a more effective way for them to resolve that. And the information that you're telling or sharing sounds like it'd be very helpful. And that way, you know, people don't have to go looking for it. We can try to make it easy. And we've done that on a few other partner agencies, and we certainly would put the district in that same category.
We would be happy to partner in that way, so thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you both for coming here tonight.
Thank you.
You've left partner presence.
Our public is getting scarce. Our final presentation has been continued, as has our one public hearing that was listed. That public hearing has been continued at the request of the applicant. So we will move on to our administrative item of the evening, a mid-year budget review for fiscal.
Before we go on to that, can we just take a motion to continue to non-specific date?
Oh, absolutely. So is there a motion to continue the public hearing on the Napa Valley Toy Company's Use Permit Amendment?
So moved.
To a date, a non-specific date to be determined.
Second.
Councilmember Dornbecker, seconded by Councilmember Mueller. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was just excited to get to the PDF of the next, the mid-year budget review for 2012-13, and we get to push some buttons and get a PDF staff report and a live staff report.
Yes. Mayor, council, thank you. I'm sorry I lost my audience, but it is nice to be up early in the evening.
The world is watching and listening.
They're listening. Everyone wants to know what's going on with Yountville's budget. So our mid-year budget is a detailed overview of our revenues and expenses. And as you know, we do a monthly report, but at mid-year, we take the opportunity to really true-up our projections and see if we do need to propose some adjustments for our expenditures. So with that, I'm just going to walk through some of the highlights in the report, starting off with the general fund and looking at our revenues. And of course, our three major revenue categories are property tax, sales tax, and TOT. Our property tax is trending to stay on budget at $925,000 for the year, and we have seen increases in past years. This year, for 1213, our assessed value increased just 1.78%. So we are thinking that is a good projection, and we're going to stay with it. We don't include any budget for excess ERAF, and if we do get that, it will just be additional funds for property tax. Our sales tax revenue was budgeted using a little more conservative amount and based on what we had expected to receive last fiscal year. And we did very well last fiscal year, and we've continued to see a trend of growing sales tax. So we are projecting for the current year to receive $970,000, which is $55,000 above what we initially budgeted. And that doesn't really include the new projects that are in progress. That's just based on what we currently have going. So we also know that going into next year, we might see a little bump up from some new projects that are in progress that have not come online yet for our sales tax. And as you know, the majority of our sales tax comes from our restaurants, our wine sales, and then also from some of our retail shops. TOT, which is always a pleasure to talk about, the trend has been upward. There's just no doubt about it. Last year, we did exceed the 5 million mark. I really couldn't have projected that at the time. This year, I'm projecting that we're going to hit 5.2 million. And actually, after reviewing the December report and doing a little analysis with that, if every month between now and the end of June stays flat to last year, we'll actually be close to 5.3 million. But we're using 5.2 for the budget. We want to remain somewhat conservative. And we do also acknowledge that we are reaching a plateau. I know we've said that before, but the new rooms that have come on and the growth that we've experienced won't continue. So future growth will be more incremental due to room rate increases and possible occupancy increases from the efforts of our T-Bid and our Chamber, ramping up some business into the slow season. So that's kind of where we're at with TOT, and those are the major revenues. We have a couple other minor revenue adjustments. We're trending ahead on licenses and permits, in particular, in building permits. So we're adjusting that up by $14,500 to $37,500 for the year. And Parks and Recreation is adjusting their revenue projections for class fees and excursion fees for a total of $7,000, based on the activities that they've seen in their programs. And one of our larger adjustments is for a new program, and it affects both revenues on the fee side and also expenses on the community promotion side. And that's for our new wayfinding sign program that the planning department has been working on. And although it's a $61,200 fee that we're projecting on the revenue side, only $50 per sign is really the administrative fee. The rest of the cost is for the actual cost of the sign, the posts, those types of things. So on the other side of that is the cost where we'll be paying out. What we're projecting for cost is $65,000. But we were able to find some resources within the community promotion budget because we had budgeted $8,000 for Community Cleanup Day. But now, we have another source for that. So we'll move that into the wayfinding sign program and then also adjust the budget by the $57,000. And this is really to get the program up and running. We probably won't have this level of activity in future years. It'll be a smaller cost and fees offset for future sign additions. The arts program, we're just proposing a budget adjustment which really will allow them to spend the money that they had at the end of the year designated for arts. They had a balance at $18,000 at the end of 2011-12. So we're just bumping up the budget to recognize that. And any leftover funds will again carry over as designated for the arts program, keeping with the theme that the money that's raised through art sales and things remain with that program. In the town clerk budget, contract services, we do have a contract with Napa Valley TV that includes a pass-through of 26% of our cable franchise fees. And we just, we shorted the budget. We put in for one quarter, and obviously, we need to pay for four quarters. So just really correcting that to make it for the full amount of what it needs to be for the year. We have a couple of minor adjustments for Public Works, where they're a little bit over in a few areas, related to signage and then also related to some supplies where they bought a quantity, but over the long term, it will save money, and they couldn't really absorb it within their existing budgets. In Parks and Recreation, two areas where they're adjusting, requesting an adjustment for their budget. One is to their part-time salaries budget, just to be sure they have coverage and that they can continue to provide a high level of customer service when staff are absent. And then also in their Parks and Recreation leisure programs for various costs. You saw the side of the revenue where they have programs that are going and are successful, and so there's some costs that go along with those programs where they're asking to make the increase, totaling $9,000 in the various areas of supplies, materials, tickets for resale for excursions, and contract instructors. So that's the summary of.
Kathleen, sorry, before we move forward, if I may ask, I've made a note now, but I'm afraid I'll scroll past it and forget it forever. With the change, it has to do with the community arts program.
Yes.
Is there any change with the status change to a formal commission with how this will be showing up or be regulated or anything like that?
At this point, no. And the fund that the finance director is referring to, we've set it up as a restricted fund. And the town contributes a very small annual allocation at the beginning of the year. This year, I believe it was 5,000. And they have raised the other balance of their funding through programs, commissions, and their efforts. So really, I do agree with the finance director. What we're attempting to do is, you know, let them spend what they raise in their programming, and those become expenditures, various activities. But the commission's not going to change the amount of staff support that goes into it. I don't anticipate a wholesale change in activity level on their part.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
So that's kind of an overview of where we're at with the general fund. And then I'd like to also talk a little bit about the enterprise funds. We are getting ready with this next utility billing cycle, January 1. It'll be our third rate increase of the five-year rate schedule, both for water and wastewater. So as you know, the utility funds have, both water and sewer, have struggled with cash flow, and we did loans for both of those funds to help cash flow for operations. So, and the first repayment of the loan was made on December 31st. So over the next few years, they'll be repaying those loans for cash flow. But you can see that the revenues are tracking. The rate increase is doing what it needs to do to bring the revenues up so that we can eliminate our operating deficits for both water operations and wastewater operations. The big challenge we have in the wastewater enterprise fund has to do with our capital projects funding or current lack thereof. We have some big projects going, especially the recycled water project, and we are pending a loan approval from the state for the revolving fund loan. And that's quite the process, and staff's been working with the consultants to get that pushed through. We have not yet received the loan, and the Joint Treatment Capital Fund is currently in a cash deficit. So I just want to bring that to your attention because if we can't secure the actual financing in the next couple months, we'll probably need to do an inter-fund loan as a bridge until we can secure that financing. And really, there's a summary of the general fund revenue adjustments.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Before you go to the summary?
Yes.
Can we back up?
Yes.
To my first bookmark. Underwater enterprise funds.
Yes.
You're showing the revenues tracking halfway through the year at 65% of budget, so over half the budget. Is that an expected amount? I don't have the benefit of seeing the future. I don't know when our revenues, you know, when we usually have the most water purchased.
Well, obviously, we're entering into the, when we have the wet season, we sell less water. So I think we'll have, I think it'll slow down for the next few months, and then it'll ramp back up when the weather gets warm. So I believe we're on track to meet this projection and possibly exceed it. It is really hard with water. It's hard to know what the usage is going to be. But I feel confident that we're going to meet this budget number, if not exceed it.
Okay, and I guess, so the next question comes in, I should ask you more, is on the expense side?
Yes.
Is that tied or to flow or not really?
The expense?
Yeah, because that's also at 65%, 62%.
It is. Well, the expenses that we have control over, you know, we know what our personnel costs are. We know, you know, supplies and materials. The tough one on expenses is the purchases because we are booking it through the year based on our budget estimate. But until we get our final true-up from the state Veterans Home on what it's going to cost per acre foot at the end of the year, we never know quite where we're going to be.
But the logic there is we're selling more water at this point, so we should have more water expense that we're at least booking.
Yes. Yes.
That's all I need. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions regarding that, too. Do we have, when are we going to get this true-up? What we're estimating is a seven-and-a-half percent increase every year for the cost of our water. And now we have two full years in what we said, and we've got all the Excel equipment that we can plug in where we are because we're getting ready for another rate increase. But I think it would be prudent just to check that this new rate increase that we've got targeted is actually, we can adjust it a little higher or lower if we need to, but we have two years of data. So are we, what was the, has that seven-and-a-half percent after it's been trued up from the Veterans Home been a realistic number for the water? And are we planning on plugging all that data in and just checking where we are shortly after we do the rate increase?
Well, those are all really good questions, and I think we'll be ready to dive in a little more deeply when we get to our budget workshops coming up.
Okay.
However, I would say we don't ever get our true cost of the water for the year until the end of the year. That's just the way it works with our agreement with the Veterans Home.
So the end of the year was just December 31st? Is that what you mean by the end of the year?
End of fiscal year. I'm sorry.
End of fiscal year. Okay.
So I believe we had, I'd have to look at the numbers. I don't have them off the top of my head. But I believe the increase was a little bit lower last year than we thought of the cost of water. But then I also know we just never quite know where we're going to land. So maybe we can get some information from the Veterans Home as we're preparing our budget to know, to have a better idea of what to estimate.
But we can plug in our actual data.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Versus our, you know, theoretical data, that's all we have with our assumptions, and just kind of see how we're doing.
Yes, definitely. And I would say that given our expenditures overall and the fact that we still have, the water still has an outstanding long-term loan due to the.
Our emergency water fund.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, you know, if we do have any extra money into reserves, we could pay those back early and avoid some interest costs down the road.
If I could, on that line of questioning, I want to remind the council that what we also talked about was the fact that we were averaging at seven and a half and that we were expecting that some might be higher, some might be lower. And that is a very good point to remember that the bulk of our water operating cost is our purchase cost. It's not salary. It's not those types of things. It's our raw purchase. What I would also say is that when we also built our rate structure, the council wanted some flexibility. And I think we were really looking at in year four and five, if the purchase price was less, then we would look at potentially a lesser rate in those future years. So far, we're not seeing a basis to recommend that yet. But the good news would be that the costs from the state have not been higher than what we projected, so.
And, and I totally understand that. This is going to be the year three of the rate increase. I just want to be prepared because I think it's finally, these rate increases, people are kind of starting to notice and, and they're pretty lofty. So year after year, when they look at their water bills, they're going to go up a lot because we've had to fix this problem. So I just want to ask to maybe, if it doesn't take that, if it's not an odious process to do it, which I think with all of our software, it's not.
Right.
Just to make sure so we can justify when they really see these rate increases coming that we've really, we're on track for where we need to be.
Graham, you were going to comment?
Yeah, I have a little bit more to add. I did speak with Veterans Home staff today, just the other day, as it so happens, and asked them, do you have any big projects coming up in your, we're working on our budget? Do you have any big, you know, big hits on the cost? Because really, the cost is fairly fixed.
Yeah.
The amount of water we purchase each year varies.
Right.
But essentially, they just take the, the total cost of their labor and projects and everything and divide it by the number of acre feet that we purchase. So the price per acre foot goes up and down based on how much we buy. Now, if they do, you know, the downtown did purchase more water than usual last year, so there are more costs for chemicals and things like that. But we don't see any big, huge project on the horizon that's going to increase the rates.
Okay, great.
And so the true-up usually comes around, I think, September. It's about the time we get those numbers, we can start to look at, okay, how much did it cost per acre foot? How much do we spend totally on the, on the program?
Okay.
So that's the latest and greatest. But it is, it is difficult to get information out of the Veterans Home.
I appreciate that.
So any other questions about the water enterprise fund specifically, Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, please. On the recycled water expansion costs, do we now have signed commitments from the wineries that they are going to take that water?
We've set up meetings in February with the recycled water customers and we're to present the agreement that the town attorneys reviewed. And we're going to meet with them to discuss that. So as soon as we have their attorneys review those agreements, then we will plan to execute those agreements. So we're in process right now.
But they're seriously considering this?
Well, especially our existing users. We have customers, four existing customers who were redoing their agreement. And there's two potential new customers who were starting the first time with an agreement with them.
And are those two new ones pretty?
They're interested. We've had stakeholder meetings and they've, they've expressed an interest. And one of the things for our state revolving loan fund is to get a letter of interest from our six customers to submit to the state. And that's one of the last steps before they'll approve the financing.
I see.
And we would anticipate having that information secured by the time we're having to talk budget.
Right.
Would be, I think, the plan.
Thank you.
With no other questions on this, or this section, Vice Mayor?
So the one question, I guess, is a follow-up to Councilmember Muller's. I, I appreciate the, there's the one side which is, are we going to be able to cut rates? And then there's the flip side of, hopefully, we don't have to raise them. And I, I bring this up in the Calistoga example because, as Calistoga as an example, if they raised their rates a couple of years ago and they now have not met those expectations and are facing yet another giant hole. So as bad as we feel about our rates going up. So I, I really felt like the real question maybe that, that Councilmember Muller was asking was, how are we doing on all of our projections? Forget about the seven and a half percent, but are we tracking right? Do we see the right amount of money coming in? And if not, we need to decide what to do. And if so, then we can look down the road. I think that's the question. Maybe budget time, we can really have a good handle on that.
Right, right. No, that's a fair question and we'll be doing more analysis on that as we move forward.
And I'll just add my two cents, looking at my crystal ball, it looks like water, we're doing pretty well, but wastewater, we're still in a pretty big hole and we've got big projects to pay for. And so we've, we've been looking at the debt financing and-
I also think-
I guess I would just add, too, that we all need to keep in mind, the rates are set not just to cover our operating costs but also for future capital outlay. And in an ideal world, we're not there yet, we would also have some reserves so that we could avoid, you know, huge future rate increases when we do have a big capital project that becomes a need.
The one challenge that I'm hopeful that we're going to have some closure on in the wastewater fund is nailing down the actual cost of the recycled water project. Right now, we know that our fixed cost for the environmental planning, design, and permitting is in the approaching 900,000 range. And we're trying to nail down what will be the accepted project from the regional board. As you all know, staff and council direction and prerogative is to do the minimum project. And I don't mean that in a negative way, but we're trying to be respectful of the impact to ratepayer and the Veterans Home. And hopefully, we're able to get a minimum project that has a cost in the 1.5 to 2 million range. And then our ratepayer share of that will only be approximately 1 million and the Veterans Home share approximately a million. As the council does know, we're also facing a little bit of a, a challenge and part of our cash flow problem is that we're, we're having a little difficulty getting prompt payment from our, our partner at this point in time on what they do owe us for wastewater. So we're working very hard and I do believe we'll have resolution on that matter shortly. But that's not helping cash flow.
So I think we can get back to the last of your report?
I'm-
Or is that it?
I, that, that's pretty much it. I was just going to say there's a summary at the end that recaps the adjustments that are being proposed and a resolution that's attached that staff asks you to consider for approval. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Are there any last questions or final council discussion? Councilmember Hall?
So, thank you, Kathleen. Quick question with regards to the TOT. And I'm not one to go throw a bunch of revenue that doesn't exist or will not exist, but you presented that you believe the likelihood of the TOT based on looking at December is going to be a $500,000 difference. Are you asking us today to accept this report and summary as presented where you're estimating only 400,000 and we'll deal with the additional 100,000 if it materializes?
Yes.
Okay, so you're not asking us, although you presented it to consider something?
No, I just wanted to throw that out, that since we got December, I, I looked at that. But no, I'm, I'm saying I stick by that 5.2 million. I have confidence in that.
Okay.
And if it comes in a little bit higher, I'm, I'm aware that it could.
We'll just deal with it at the end of the year.
Yes, yes.
And as the council knows, this mid-year revised budget is very important in our long-range planning because we look at both the revenue and the expenditures as our base for when we begin the budget preparation, which has already started on our end. So that's why we take a lot of heart in making sure that if there's adjustments on both ends, we fully understand them. We've also implemented the three-year trending so that we'll hopefully be able to really start tracking revenue receipts and have a more comfortable where they're going as, and expenditures, so that we can start looking at that. You have two fairly conservative approaches in the finance director and myself. We'd almost rather, I, I think we've narrowed the gap quite a bit that we had from when we really saw the expansion in TOT. Now we're narrowing the gap. I, I think you're going to see a baseline budget recommendation on TOT revenue of 5.2 as we build the budget. And, you know, you remember, there's a kind of a workshop we go through with a series of questions and some baselines. And we'll anticipate beginning that process in early March with you.
I just have a follow-up question to that. And then just as a, to re-educate myself, I'm feeling a little foggy this evening. So this net $398,000 adjustment that you're proposing, we accept? Isn't that the math? 502 positive to the general fund revenue and 103 negative to the, 104 negative to the expenditure?
Yes.
Okay. What, what occurs with that? You're just proposing that as an adjustment to the plan?
Just an adjustment for our budget, right? Our projection and not, nothing-
We're not allocating it to-
No.
Correct.
Not at this point.
Okay. I'm just trying to reiterate for my-
Right, right. After we close the books and we have our final numbers, we'll come back with a year-end report and then you'll have a chance to allocate any unassigned funds.
Because none of this really means anything until such time as the end of the fiscal year, we come back and say, okay, this actually occurred.
Do, we have the money in the bank, right.
Okay, thank you.
But it shows a very positive trend.
Councilmember Muller?
I was just wondering if you'd like a resolution proposal?
Any other questions? If not, I'd welcome a motion.
I move to approve resolution number 3090-13, approving mid-year budget adjustment number 2012 to 2013-05. Let me, let me do that again. 2012-13-05 for fiscal year 2012-13.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Very encouraging information, yet again, from our finance director. I believe we're now on to item 11, staff informational reports. Do we have any?
There are none this time.
There are none. Councilmember meeting reports and comments. We'll start with meeting reports. The Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency meeting was canceled due to a lack of business. Watershed Information Center and Conservancy of Napa County.
I, we did, we met on Thursday, January 24th in Napa. And we discussed, among other things, the draft conditional waiver of waste discharge requirements for vineyard properties. And there's a lot of information that's being circulated about it to the vineyard owners at this time. And there are resources for them to look at it online. At, you can find them at the WIC, at the WIC website. We also discussed the total maximum daily loads action. Excuse me. I used to have my note go on. Where'd it go? We discussed the daily, maximum daily loads, action plans to restore clean water. The federal Clean Water Act requires the state to identify bodies, bays, rivers, streams, and creeks that do not meet quality standards and the pollutants that impair them. So there are daily loads examining the water quality in the, throughout Napa County and they identify the sources of the pollutants and specify actions that create the solutions. And we also had a presentation about storm water control, including storm water control for small, small projects, talking about rain barrels and cisterns, which I've been thinking about this for a long time. I'm so excited. So it's a, there will be a future workshop on the storm water control for capturing rainwater. And there will also be grants available for homeowners who wish to have these cisterns installed. And there was a gentleman on the WIC board who is from Pope Valley. And he uses cisterns and he raved about how wonderful it is. He catches all the water from his roof and he has five cisterns and he uses them during the summer. So I'm very excited about this. And as soon as I have all of the details, I will bring it back and, and let the council and residents know all about these, the grants coming up. And also, there'll be some meetings about it if you wish to attend.
Great, thank you very much. I am going to jump back, just, I made a note under the NCTPA.
That was wishful thinking on your part.
Yes. We did, did you, I don't know, I'm not sure if the Vice Mayor has any follow-up, but I just wanted to recognize that there were some local business leaders that, that went before the Board of Supervisors and spoke on the issue of highway litter, primarily along Highway 29 but also along Silver Island Trail. And some people probably saw in the media, there was some coverage of that. But it's been an ongoing problem. I've addressed it. I think the Vice Mayor has spoken to it also at our NCTPA board meetings with Caltrans representatives. At one point, we were told part of the problem was they had suspended due to lawsuit, the Adopt a Highway program that has apparently been reinstated. So we'll see what kind of action Caltrans is willing to support moving forward with the litter, litter abatement. So we'll probably hear about that coming up. Was there anything else?
Well, I was going to point out, this, this month's meeting was not canceled, but it's moved to next week. There was some sort of conflict. I forget what, what the issue was there. So that's on the 20th of February. And we had our first meeting at the new transit center at Burnell Street in downtown Napa in that very beautiful transit center. So that was interesting. And our mayor was thrilled to be appointed as the new Vice Chair of NCTPA.
Yeah, I didn't put that in my notes.
Yeah. Filling Jack Jingle's tenure for the rest of this, I guess, is it fiscal year?
Yeah.
I think we did it by fiscal year anyhow.
With the expectation of that.
And I did not nominate him. Last time I did that, I got in trouble.
Yeah, thank you for that follow-up. There is a ribbon cutting coming up that I wasn't going to reference yet because we will be meeting here-
Yeah.
-in the interim. Any other meeting reports before we go on to comments? Councilmember Muller?
I'll try to make this quick. I attended Sacramento, the Environmental Quality Committee for the California League of Cities and worked through a lot of, just kind of housekeeping stuff on our agenda and set our goals for next year. But there was one, turned out to be extremely controversial issue that I thought I'd kind of bring up. Let me kind of walk through this. California, the state of California has a big cap and trade program based on PG&E and all these emissions. And it's, we're talking about like a billion dollars or, or billion and a half. So they're trying to now figure out what they're going to do with all this money that they're generating from cap and trade. So a small portion will go back to ratepayers and the rest, they've turned over to one of their agencies within the California State EPA. And so they've been working on this project for the last two years. And what they've done, they prepared this giant survey of all the ZIP codes within California and they came up with all this criteria that ranged, there were pretty extensive, like 10 or 12 different points that they looked at, you know, that ranged from particulate in the air to asthma rates to hazardous dump sites. And they gave all these 10 or 12 things a score. And then they generated the, the score sheet by ZIP code so they could map all these things out. And so their plan, which they thought was a great idea, was this is how they're going to give away all this enormous cap and trade funds. If you had a, if you had a lot of dump sites and a big asthma rate, you got a high score. So people with high scores would, you know, those communities would get all this money. But the major controversy kind of came up within our Environmental Quality Committee that they've done all this and kind of the cat's out of the bag. We didn't really have anything or any input into it, but now we've, we're trying to get input into it to decide how the league really, what our position is on this. There wasn't any raw data. They said we didn't need to look at it. We kind of thought we did. Also, there was just a lot of concern that all this information could be, you know, misused in a lot of different ways because, you know, what was their criteria for deciding this or that? So there are a big series of meetings that are going to follow up to this big map that was going to be used to generate all these funds. So I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention.
Thank you very much. With no other meeting reports, council comments? Any in particular? If not, I'll, I'll go through a few of my notes here. The Napa Valley Performing Arts Center at Lincoln Theater held an open house on January 18th. And there were about 200 guests that enjoyed performances by the American Canyon a cappella singers, voena performers, and the Youth Symphony. And there is a grand opening gala planned for March 23rd. And tickets, I believe this last week or so, went on sale for that event. Also, I wanted to recognize Yountville Kiwanis for a very successful crab feed. I'm not sure what the final numbers were, but it was a packed house and a really, really fun event, as was the Yountville School Foundation's post feed the following week. A really packed house. And again, a lot of fun, very, very cool community events, both of them. And again, a lot of fun, very, very cool community events, both of them. And again, I wanted to thank our town staff, Michelle and Julie, for tirelessly, with smiles most of the time, getting us here to this paperless agenda and paperless meetings. I know part of it was self-interest with the thousands of copies you have to make and the cumbersome binders. So, on behalf of all of us, thank you for helping us get here and we'll just get smoother as we move along. And thankfully, nothing was dramatically erased in the middle of our meeting tonight. It doesn't mean it won't happen next time, but so far, I haven't hit cancel yet, so. Thanks again for that. Vice Mayor?
I just want to follow up real quick on the pasta feed this past Friday. That event has been sponsored and essentially paid for, for the last, somewhere between 16 and 22 years, the Housley family at Ranch Market. And this year was the first year that we really had a true partnership with the School Foundation and the Housley family to run that event, which I think was great for both parties. And anyone who was there will know that we exceeded our tenants' expectations, so we'll make a few adjustments next year on counting tickets. But it was a terrific event. It's one of those great events because it is affordable and you get to see a lot of people there from all sections of the community and we nearly doubled the all-time take of that event on Friday. So, it was, it was really great. It was a lot of fun. So, thank you to everybody who came and donated money and ate pasta.
And I want to also thank specifically our community center town staff because they did have to scramble at the last minute to get more tables, more chairs, squeezing them through the already rather full room. So, they really responded nicely to that kind of, I won't call it an emergency, but last-minute adjustment. The last thing I was going to mention, for those interested, Friday, the 15th, is going to be the next Pathway Home graduation. It's held here at our community center. I'm really happy that we have founded a home there at the community center after these last few years. Starts at 11 o'clock. If you haven't attended, if you are looking to learn more about the Pathway Home program, it really is a pretty incredible program for Iraq and Afghanistan veterans that are receiving treatment for post-traumatic stress or traumatic brain injury. And it's located up at the Veterans Home, but it is a nonprofit, private enterprise, so you're always welcome to attend that event and the pathwayhome.org website for more information. Any other final comments before we get to that last? We have a list of future agenda items, I see. We do have the Taste of Yanville coming up, but again, we need a few times before that, but that is March 15th and 16th with a new format, a combination, it sounds like, of street fair and more. So, we're all anxious to hear what the more is. Presentation for the Napa County Library Commission. Hopefully, they'll be here to tell us about the additional expansion of ours. Also, Capital Improvement Program Workshop. Do we have a need for closed session?
We do not.
Good answer. With that, the bottom of my tablet says adjournment to our next regularly scheduled council meeting of Tuesday, February 19th at 6:00 PM. Is there a motion?
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Do that to John.